Meeting to order, if you would rise, you can pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Kushner?
Here.
Osborne?
Here.
Latari?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Euler?
Here.
Approval of city council minutes.
Move to approval.
Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes. Adoption of agenda?
Motion to approve agenda as presented.
Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Okay.
Item number five, presentation, Missouri Main Street, twenty twenty-four Premier Partner Award to the City of Warrensburg, presented by Phil Adlich, Interim Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, bringing Jamie back with me. You all, for sure, will know her. The Warrensburg Main Street entered our name into a poll drawing in, on August 8th. We won, the city of Warrensburg won. It is a great presentation or a little slideshow that we're going to play, so that you all can see. City of Warrensburg. Warrensburg Main Street and the City of Warrensburg have long collaborated to revitalize downtown Warrensburg, overcoming challenges and addressing external pressures. Their partnership rooted in open communication and transparency has flourished, particularly when the city was honored at the Evening of Excellence in twenty twenty-three for its unwavering support. The alliance's strength was evident as they planned the tenth BURG Fest, a fall festival. Historically, the community's relenting requests for a carnival were unmet due to various obstacles. However, in twenty twenty-three, a chance encounter with a carnival company opened the door for future collaboration. Surprisingly, a month before BURG Fest, the company offered to participate due to a cancellation. Despite the short notice, Warrensburg Main Street seized the opportunity. The logistical feat of fitting a carnival into the downtown area was daunting, but with the carnival company's green light and the city's proactive support, they tackled the challenge. They navigated through complex logistics, securing county parking lots and relocating the beer garden and main stage to Pine Street, a first for the festival. The community's response was overwhelmingly positive, with significant social media engagement and record attendance, surpassing twenty-nine thousand attendees over two days. The success was such that the inclusion of a carnival became a priority for future events. The city's support was pivotal, not just for the carnival, but for the festival's overall execution. Their commitment ensured the carnival's return for the twenty twenty-four BURG Fest, cementing the event's status as a beloved community tradition. So through our partnerships with Main Street and then dominating us for us more, we were able to win, and it's just a nice thing that Main Street and Warrensburg are able to do.
We only knew he was a finalist, and so never feel joining at our evening events for state conference. It was surprise to both of us, and we celebrated shockingly together. But thank you all so much, State Department.
Congratulations to you, and all the volunteers, we appreciate it, it's great.
Great work.
Thank you.
Item six, public hearing. A public comment on a five-year capital improvement plan presented by Courtney Christensen, Interim HR Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilpeople. Thank you for allowing me to present this to you. You can look at the monitors and see people in the public. This is your, a draft proposal to the council of a five-year capital improvement program. It's a pay-as-you-go program. It's a bit different from the past ones where we had a lot of, there was a lot of requests to the city by the different city departments, but it wasn't actually matched to revenues. So this is a plan where the revenues equal the amount of the projects that are being recommended for each year. Now, this is not, it is a five-year program. It starts October first of twenty twenty-four and would end on September thirtieth of twenty twenty-nine. But the council would only commit to year one, and then the rest of it, it's a living document. So when we go and do, when you drive the streets and you start doing your appraisals of what streets need to be rehabbed or whatever, you know, a lot of times you look and you think, oh, this is going to go to pot this next year if we have a bad winter. And then it's fine, and then another road that you thought was fine does. And so you've got to be able to switch out between those. You could have an emergency, you know, there could be all different reasons why you would change it. But by having a five-year plan, you're able to actually start planning for things that are coming, doing some savings sometimes for things that are big-ticket items. It also helps you with applying for, if you were to decide to go out for a geo-bond or something like that, the bonding, the rating agencies like to see a five-year capital plan that is actually, has a plan for how it's going to be actually funded. That's a big part of their judgment, so. I don't have the thing, sorry, I didn't mean to use, is it with me? Okay, so first of all, I know the council knows, but since it's for the public too, I wanted to just explain here's a little definition. This was produced by Jessica, our new management analyst, she did this PowerPoint for me. The CIP is a financial and planning tool, just like we've talked about before. It can, includes basically four large areas of payment. Things that would be a capital infrastructure improvement, which is like rebuilding a road or starting something from scratch or building a building, something like that. We have capital equipment, which are equipment that's over a five-thousand-dollar value that would go into our fixed assets, but a lot of times they're really large items like a new fire engine, which is a million three. Those kinds of things are going to be in there, new police patrol cars are in there. New police rifles are in this five-year plan, so it's a lot of different things as far as the equipment. Then there's capital maintenance, which includes the mill and overlay of streets. It includes new curbs, it includes new sidewalks, those kinds of things. Include, we have included in there stormwater, lining of stormwater pipes, you know, those kinds of things. Getting rid of inflow and infiltration into our sanitary sewer system. There's money each year for those kinds of projects, so that's what that comes down to. And the very last category is that the city entered into some certificates of participation, known around the office as COPs. Took me a while to figure out what that was, but certificates of operations, of participation, use your sales tax that you got for capital improvements to fund debt so that you can do a big project earlier and then use some of your sales tax for capital improvements each year to pay that debt. And so we have three projects that fall into that category that we're paying for, from this. So that's kind of the beginning of that. And then we have the expenditure categories that I just spoke about are those. And so in year five, twenty-five, which is the one that would be adopted, the capital infrastructure improvements equals seventeen point four million dollars. Fifteen million of that is for Maguire Street. Okay, capital equipment is one point two million, capital maintenance is one point six, and then we have the debt service on the certificates of participation of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand that's included in the five-year plan. And I will hand out to you all the, the plans here, since you haven't seen them yet. The capital infrastructure improvements, like we talked about, Maguire is one of those large, build it kind of from the ground up, it's not just a lick and slick. But mill and pay, you know, is two inches, this is a major work. The sanitary sewer, as I know you have been informed, we have a problem with that underneath the Maguire Street that we were, did not know at the time. We've got a million two in there to fix that issue. And then there's street reconstruction of another small street, which is, I know that you know this street because I wrote it nine million times, but very small street. Cedar Court, from Wood Lawn to, to the end of the cul-de-sac is a nine hundred and ninety-thousand-dollar project that is included in here. Then in capital equipment, we have a lot more things that are just than are here, but just some of the highlights. A new jet truck for water and pollution control, so they can jet out the sewers. IT production and DR servers are needed, two different ones, they're a hundred and ten thousand approximately apiece, and we need them next year. ER stands for disaster recovery, thank you, I did not know. I just do what Gary tells me, he says, put it in, and I'm like, okay. Two police patrol cars are in there and a fire station alerting system for their safety. So are included in next year. And then we have the capital maintenance, we have a million dollars of our capital maintenance is going for our annual street curb and gutter program, the ADA ramps. That's the largest amount that you've had, at least in the last ten years that I've seen being spent on that program. That helped with the new sales tax being re-approved so that we knew that we had it available to do this work. The sidewalk improvement program, two hundred thousand, and the stormwater lining for a hundred thousand is in there. The COPs is the three different debts, we have a park improvement that is going on, or has completed, that has debt. Hamilton Street that was completed, and then the city hall renovations that were completed. So those are just their debt funds. So for twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty-nine, we have additional thirteen point two million in capital infrastructure improvements included, six million of capital equipment, five point three of capital maintenance, and another three point four in debt for the certificates of participation. The highlights of it is we have continuation of phase two, of phase one into FY twenty-six, which is another two million dollars towards that project. Two fire engines are included during that four-year process. And then the street and gutter program will have an additional three point two million spent on it, so four point two total in the five-year plan that is being presented. And then West Market also gets a rebuild for two million dollars in the plan. So, in summary, the five-year program, pay-as-you-go program, except, you know, remember Maguire is a geo-bond, but the rest of it is all already done or is included in the revenues. It's, we're projecting forty-three million, five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars to be spent in revenue going into the program and forty-three million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars being spent during that five-year program. So I do have those. So that you can study them, or if you have, people have questions. And then I will be getting this to Jody, it was not finally, and so she'll be adding it to the packet. I'll give it to you electronically, so.
So this is, we are not required to do a public hearing, but it has been council's practice to take any comment on our capital improvement plan. So I'm not sure if anyone has signed up or if anyone in the audience would like to comment on our capital improvement plan, but now it's.
We don't have any. Thank you, Courtney. Item six point two, public hearing ordinance, authorizing a conditional use permit for a three-story multifamily apartment building in a general business district located at eleven oh six South Mitchell Street, presented by Barbara Carroll, Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a public hearing for a property that's located at eleven oh six South Mitchell Street. There are a couple maps in your packet, an aerial photo that shows this is one lot, and it is just north of the former First Community Bank, now the Equity Bank Building that's at the corner of DD, Hill Lake Road and Mitchell Street. So it's the lot directly north of that. It is to the north, to the west, and to the south of that property, all zone general business. That property is own general business, is surrounded by general business on three sides. And then on the east side, a portion of it is adjacent to general business and a portion of it is adjacent to light industrial. So a couple years ago, let's see, in twenty twenty-two, there was a conditional use permit for a different multifamily project that was proposed north of this property. And that project was Deer Creek Cottage Project. Ultimately, that conditional use permit was approved. It encompassed three lots north of this, and then Deer Run, and then some lots north of Deer Run. Nothing has been built, they haven't exercised or utilized their conditional use permit and applied for anything yet, but that was approved. So this property is owned by Antias Property LLC, and they are interested in working with Jackson Skirlock, who is here this evening. And he is proposing to develop this property at eleven oh six South Mitchell Street with a three-story multifamily apartment building. So the reason for the conditional use permit is that, is two points, that's in your staff report. First point being that in a general business district, any building over two stories would require a conditional use permit. So part of the request is to have a three-story building. The second part of the request is for, to be allowed to have multifamily in the general business. That would be for both land use one point three three zero to be on the street level, so the ground level, and then one, land use one point three three five to have apartments on the second and higher levels, in this case, the second floor and a third floor. He's proposed twenty-seven efficiency apartments in that three-story building. The twenty-seven efficiency apartments, an efficiency apartment is designed, is defined as an apartment that's between three hundred square feet and five hundred square feet in size. Can have a, a living area, a sleeping area, a bathroom, and a kitchen. Would have to have at least those four items to be considered a dwelling unit. And they require one point five parking spaces per dwelling unit. So the site plan that he's included, as well as some building elevations and floor plans are in your packet. Staff has reviewed those, because the site plan's required to be submitted to the city for consideration of a conditional use permit, staff reviewed that. We are comfortable that they will be able to meet the city's codes. At this point in time, it does not. So in your packet is a list of five items that staff has called out, and those items are included, were included as part of the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and so they have also been included on your ordinance for consideration this evening. But we're comfortable that with revisions and the full building permit submittal, should the conditional use permit be issued, they can meet those requirements. And without drastic changes to the layout, as you see it on the site plan tonight. We did notify property owners within three hundred feet of the property of the hearing, both in front of Planning and Zoning Commission last week and City Council this week. We received one public comment that's noted in your staff report, and we have not received any additional public comment since that time. No additional public comment was received at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we haven't had any in the week since then. Staff has recommended approval, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval at their meeting last week with incorporating two conditions. First, that staff be granted the authority to approve the final site plan as part of the building permit process. And second, that the review items staff had listed be satisfactorily addressed on the final site plan and permit submittal. Both of those items are incorporated in the ordinance you have in front of you this evening, and staff would recommend approval of the ordinance. Mr. Skirlock is here, if you have questions with him.
Any questions? Stacey, any question?
I'm curious what the.
Let's close the public hearing, and then when we do the ordinance, we can do our special.
Thank you for reminding me.
You're welcome, you're fine.
That's right, we want to sign though.
Now you can ask your phone, let's do the read the ordinance, Jody, and then we'll have a discussion.
Mayor have to read that and move to a second?
Mayor does the first reading.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Seven point one, an ordinance authorizing a conditional use permit for a three-story multifamily apartment building in a general business district located at eleven oh six South Mitchell. An ordinance approving and accepting the minor plat. Nope, that's not it.
No.
No, that's good, we just need a motion to move to second reading.
Move to read, moved, to move that to a second reading by title.
Thank you. Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
And.
Now let's have a discussion.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
So I did have a question about the, what the cost, what the, what the cost would be for these units, to individuals who rent them.
Excuse me, it'll be about one point nine million.
I apologize to the folks who would be renting the units, no, I'm sorry, I probably didn't say that loudly.
We're looking at nine hundred dollars a month, that includes all utilities except for electric, stainless steel appliances, wash and dryer included, final plank floor and surround, granny countertops, it's going to be a very nice place.
Yeah, nine hundred, all utilities except electric.
Except for electric, yes.
And are they all electric?
Yes. Yep.
Have, have you gotten an estimate from every G about what that might, that average bill might be?
Forty to fifty dollars what they're thinking.
Okay.
So we're using high-efficient mini-split units with heat pumps, so they're about as efficient as you can get.
Yeah. Great, okay, thank you, that was my question.
Anybody else?
Nope.
Are these considered low income?
No, no, we're just, we open to general public.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Nope.
Thank you, appreciate that.
An ordinance authorizing a conditional use permit for a three-story multifamily apartment building in a general business district located at eleven oh six South Mitchell Street. This would be for adoption or rejection. Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven point two, an ordinance approving and accepting the minor plat of Vaughan Place, a subdivision of the City of Warrensburg located at one eleven and one thirteen West Oak Street, presented by Barbara Carroll.
This is a property that is at one eleven and one thirteen West Oak Street, it's two properties, and they're, they're just west of Holden Street, so it's, Oak Street is a small street, but you can turn off Holden Street, and as you turn to go west, it's on the north side of, north side of Oak Street. There's two properties currently, and what this plat would do would be to combine those two properties and then separate them out again into two different properties. So it's changing the internal lot lines between the two properties, but in the end, you would still have two properties. It is located in a general business district, and both properties currently have a single-family house on them, and those houses are proposed to remain. So each house, there would still be one lot with one house on each lot. But this, we can, combining and separating again puts the outbuildings and, and more of the property into what will be Lot One. So it gets those over to that house that utilizes them. There are no special conditions with this plat. Staff has, because it is located in a general business district, and it's not, you know, for all of time, we can't guarantee that it, those stays currently developed, they are general business lots. We have required, and they have included on the plat, that right-of-way improvements would be required for curb, gutter, and sidewalk on the north side of Oak Street if the properties or when the properties redevelop. I, I don't believe they have an intent to redevelop at this time, but you never know. And in the city's interest would be to have that, that street improved and those public improvements made, if they do ever redevelop in the future. So simply approving the plat tonight does not cause them to go out and make those improvements today. They can sell those houses, they can remain houses, as long as they don't lose their grandfather's status, continue to use them, sell them to the next person, the next person can use them as houses without having to make those improvements, changes, use, or redevelops, then those requirements would be required, and that's been noted on the plat. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval at their meeting last week. They have made all of the recommendations, changes that staff had required, so we would recommend approval of the plat as presented.
Happy to answer any questions?
Questions?
Motion to move to second reading by title only. Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
An ordinance approving and accepting the minor plat of Vaughan Place, a subdivision in the City of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at one eleven and one thirteen West Oak Street. This is for adoption or rejection. Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, item seven point three, an ordinance approving and accepting the final plat of Austin Blossom Edition Replat, a subdivision in the City of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at two ten and two twelve North Holden Street, presented by Barbara Carroll.
This plat at one, at two ten and two twelve North Holden Street, both of those addresses are on one property at the moment, and is in the central business district, is surrounded by central business district and existing buildings. The district on all sides and existing buildings on two sides. This has an interesting history in that in twenty seventeen, when Austin Blossoms wanted to expand into. Um this has an interesting history in that in twenty seventeen, when Awesome Blossoms wanted to expand into the second tenant space at two ten North Holden Street. The building code at that time stated you couldn't put a hole in the firewall between the two buildings, between the the common wall without um the same without being on one parcel. And so at that time, they did the Awesome Blossom Edition plat and combined these two lots that have been around since the late eighteen hundreds into one property with two buildings on it. And then the following year in twenty eighteen, the city adopted new building codes. We adopted our updated our codes in twenty eighteen. And that requirement changed. So since that time, the ordinance has not needed that last plat to have occurred. Um it has occurred, i- i- it's remained on the books. It's been fine. Um at this point, they would like to make um some ownership changes. And so it would be more useful to them if they were back into two separate lots. And since the code would now allow that without making any changes to the building, uh a- a- any changes structurally or to the firewall or anything, uh the door can stay exactly like it is. Um they have prepared, had Whitehead prepare this plat which would separate the one parcel back into two parcels. Those parcels match the parcels that had existed for a hundred years prior to twenty seventeen. Um and because well, because we have subdivision regulations. These lots that match our hundred-year-old lots no longer meet all of our codes. So they are asking in the approval of the plat tonight for two exceptions. Not uncommon, you just stood one a few months ago with um Fox Den with um Fox Heating and Cooling where he was putting that lot on Market Street and he did an exception in the approval of that plat for a fifty-foot wide lot instead of a sixty-foot wide lot. Same process, same type of thing tonight. So what uh this plat is asking in the approval of the ordinance approving the plat is that you would approve that Lot One, A, be allowed to be twenty-five feet wide instead of fifty feet wide. And that Lot One B be twenty-four feet wide instead of fifty feet wide. That would match the footprint of the building and what the lots had always been. Also asking for an exception to the lot depth. So the standard lot depth is one hundred feet and these lots are both at sixty feet. So it would be an exception to both lots for lot depth. Uh there is no lot area requirement, so we don't need an exception for that. Um staff has recommended approval in that uh it is in the best interest of of the area of the economic vitality of the downtown and the future use of those buildings. Uh for them to be the most flexible to be in two separate lots that could have two different ownerships. Um going forward fifteen, another hundred years, that's going to be uh in the best interest of of the community as as well as um our downtown area and and the character of the of the area. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval at their meeting last week, including approving the two exceptions. Those have been incorporated into the ordinance in front of you this evening. They made any changes that the staff required prior to submitting it to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So we are recommending approval with the two exceptions as noted in the ordinance and in the exhibit A that you have as an attachment to the ordinance. No other changes would be necessary. Happy to answer any questions? And I know Jennifer Debackers here. If you have questions of the applicant.
Questions? We get a motion?
Motion to move to second reading by title.
Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
An ordinance approving and accepting the final plat of Awesome Blossom Edition Replat, a subdivision in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri located at two ten and two twelve North Holden Street. This is for adoption or rejection. Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Here.
Item seven point four, an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to enter to an agreement between the city of Warrensburg and Johnson County Emergency Management for the use of the Emergency Operations Center presented by Deputy Fire Chief Thorox.
Good morning. Evening, I guess. I got a little bit good. Uh anyway, what uh we're trying to do here is work with the county E O C to set up an alternative site uh for our E O C, our Emergency Operations Center in case of a disaster, which we hope never be false. Uh but it is a good practice to be ready. Uh as you can tell throughout, if you read the news, there's more and more disasters occurring every day. Uh and uh you all pretty much read what's going to happen here. Uh they are prepared. Their their uh E O C is already set up with TVs, uh computer systems, radio systems for us to move right into it if we need to. Uh their strategic plan for this is for community pride and interaction. Uh it will be an annual payment of three thousand two hundred seventy-seven fifty-two. It's calculated off our population. And uh Chief Jennings uh recommends this to pass. Any questions?
It just what would you say I'm correct? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Um what this does is in case of emergency, the city is affected by it, but our management operation can be up ill-swear and protected.
So we've had uh something similar in place and we've previously paid to be able to use this facility if necessary. Yes. And we pay this once a year. Yes.
It keeps us from having to buy all the computers, the technology and the data and for three thousand dollars a year. It's not a bad deal.
Now, if they they have the facilities, they have set up the room for you all. Uh city council, city leaders, another room separate from the operation.
And where is this located at?
Oh gosh. It's just uh outside of Warrensburg. It's uh the old Johnson County Ambulance Building.
Okay.
South of town.
Mm-hmm.
Uh the upstairs is all emergency management.
Okay.
And that's the current county emergency management.
All right.
Lend in with them.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, this uh said ordinance we pass second reading by title.
Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to enter into an agreement between the city of Warrensburg and Johnson County Emergency Management for the use of the Emergency Operations Center. This is for adoption or rejection. Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item seven point five, an ordinance readopting section two dash one to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interests of certain municipal officials presented by Jody Schneider, the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um this is a readoption of a conflict of interest and substantial interest ordinance um that is allowed by the uh chapter one oh five of the state statutes for the city government to dictate its own method of disclosing these potential interest, um conflicts of interest and substantial interests of municipal officials and certain employees. The uh statute is to be adopted every other year and sent by certified mail to the Missouri Ethics Commission. Within ten days of adoption, the ordinance declares um our finding, our procedure, the reason why it's important to have the policy. Um and it defines who must disclose um where the reports are filed and um and is out there for transparency of government. So. Do you have any questions for me? No?
No, through. I mean, said ordinance is second reading by title.
Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
An ordinance readopting section two dash one to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest of certain municipal officials. This is for adoption or rejection. Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven point six, an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Warrensburg R six school district for the school resource officer program for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year presented by Police Chief Munster.
Mayor, City Council, um for you, you have the M O U with a uh school district. Um this M O U we've been in place since for approximately twenty-five years. Um we had two officers, Corporal Tim Dorman and Corporal Tal Moses assigned to the schools for approximately fifteen years before they left. Um we added two more officers to the program in sixteen seventeen, I believe it was. Um right now we have one corporal and uh two one officer, um Officer Lane Fisher and Corporal Emma Miller. We had Chris Cole. He left for independence, but we're getting ready to add uh Melissa Dukos. She's interested in S R O program, so she's going in the fall to the S R O. So that will give us three of the four positions allotted. Um has minimal impact on her physical financial, so I recommend uh passing this ordinance. Any questions?
Did it go through special training before becoming?
So in ninety-five, I located uh Corporal Dorman. He actually went to uh the Nationals Association of School Resource Officers um back in nineteen ninety-five. We actually just sent uh Emma Miller to some training. Um they're going to S R O training. So yes, they do receive it. Once they put in for it, the school districts, if it's uh related to the schools, they'll reimburse this for them.
Perfect, great. Good question.
Any other question?
Motion to move a second reading by title.
Thank you.
Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Warrensburg R six school district for the school resource officer program for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. This is for adoption or rejection. Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item seven point seven, an ordinance vacating an alley running east and west between five oh eight and five ten Water Street in the southernmost alley depicted on the plat of George Deborah Colburn's Second Edition to the Town of Warrensburg presented by Phil Adlitch, Interim Project Works Director.
Mayor, City Council, uh this is crane holding and investment protected city to vacate this property uh between five oh eight and five ten Water Street. There are no public public utilities roaming in that area. It is an unmaintained alleyway and uh staff recommends that we go in and vacate.
What's on, what's to the actual south of it? Is there another subdivision?
No, it's street department.
Oh.
To the south of that is, well, it isn't, we'll actually that's the street department. To the south is is
There's a there's a vacant lot at five oh eight.
There's a
and then the city's
From the city, the city's property. Probably held property.
Yeah.
So the alley, um the width of the alley will be split between
Five oh eight, five two. The the which the law in Missouri is that a platted alley returns to the plat from whence the alley was dedicated. In most situations, that would mean that it would return one half to each side. In this particular instance, this is at the southernmost portion of the plat. So we would be unable to speak to whether or not half of the virgin property is south in this particular instance. That that would take court declaration to determine. The general rule would be half and half because usually it's on the interior of the plat. In this situation, it is not. It's on the exterior of a plat, so it's a little uneasy.
So we don't know who's gonna own it?
We can't make a declaration as to who would own it. All we can say at this point is that that would change the setbacks with respect to the the property in which it is north and to the south.
Property owners to the north and the south uh are in communication with each other and have some future follow-up agreements.
They they are related parties
Yeah.
in in this situation.
They get along?
Yes.
They're related.
That doesn't mean anything.
Maybe we shouldn't declare that either.
Very good question. It's not always a clear-cut answer. It's the common expectation is that it's half and half, but it's not always.
Okay. Thank you for that. Uh motion to move the second reading by title.
Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
An ordinance vacating an alley running east and west between five oh eight and five ten Water Street being the southernmost alley depicted on the plat of George W W Colburn's Second Edition to the Town of Warrensburg. This is for adoption or rejection. Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um seven point eight, an ordinance accepting the sanitary sewer, street and stormwater improvements in Juniper Ridge for maintenance by the city of Warrensburg, Missouri presented by Phil again.
Evening, again. Uh this one is to accept the maintenance for the streets and sewer and storm on Juniper Ridge. They have been tested and passed, so staff recommends that we go ahead and accept.
I couldn't see who the developer was um the image. Who is the developer? I'm just curious. Thank you.
Any questions?
It's just
Any other questions? Okay.
You said uh ordinance be passed second reading by title.
Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
An ordinance accepting the sanitary sewer, street and stormwater improvements in Juniper Ridge for maintenance by the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item eight point one, a resolution authorizing the disposal and transfer of city-owned equipment presented by Deputy Fire Chief Oxley.
Good evening again. Uh this is to uh transfer ownership of our old A E Ds. Uh they have been around and beaten for about fifteen years.
Long time.
Yeah. Yeah, you did, yeah. And uh what we'd like to do is to uh because we purchased new ones, we'd like to have these uh donated to the Missouri State Fair Fire Department. That's a pretty unique fire department. They come together once a year and create the fire department for the Missouri State Fair. Uh currently there, we've loaned them to them for this this state fair and we'd like to transfer their ownership to them. Uh we feel that fifteen years was good use out of them and they needed updated and replaced. So we did, but we also think using them once a year or twice a year, they'll be okay from there. That's what we chose to uh ask you all to do is to uh transfer that ownership over to them. Uh we have asked all departments and they are in agreement with that. So if you have any questions?
How many are there?
I believe we have uh six.
Okay.
The great plan. Love the Marines for you.
Motion to
Is this like under the uh the lab bell, the under the fire marshal's donated property program?
It's, I think we're just donating this straight over. I don't, I don't think we're going through the fire marshals on this one.
Okay.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second? Oh. Oh, no, second. Okay, second. I thought you were saying second.
Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item eight point two, a resolution in support of Timber View Crossing, a proposed apartment housing development for senior citizens in Warrensburg, Missouri presented by our city manager, Daniel Doolan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, good evening, City Council. Uh, Timber View Crossing is a proposed apartment housing development for senior citizens in Warrensburg. Uh, the approximate location is North Bridgeview Drive between Gay Street and East Young Avenue. Uh, this development would include a single two-story building that will house up to forty-four one and two-bedroom units for residents age fifty-five and over. Uh, the developers are applying for low-income housing tax credit. Um, and therefore they need a letter of support or a resolution um, from City Council. Uh, this uh, does provide us, uh, City Council has recognized that affordable housing is something that we need in our community, specifically for seniors. Um, this does help us um, achieve some of those different types of housing, diversity in housing that have been outlined in the uh, housing study that was done by Whitman Area Leadership Council. Uh, I want to make sure the developers are here this evening to answer any questions you may have um, related to the affordable uh, rents um, of these units and to talk to uh, many of the amenities that have been provided in these units as well. Uh, the final thing that I do want to share however, is that uh, this development has not gone through our planning process yet. Um, and so this resolution in no way in lieu, you know, the approval through our planning process and any development that is ultimately decided on is still subject to subdivision regulations and other development codes in accordance with city code and state. So this is just a letter of support um, for them to apply for those uh, low-income uh, housing tax credits.
Could you tell me where it's located again, please?
Sure, so it's at North Ridgeview Drive between Gay Street and East Young Avenue. Uh, there was a map in your uh, packet as well.
Just north of, north side.
It's, it sits low.
Yeah.
It's. Uh, does this make it tax, if it comes to be, is it tax exempt for real estate taxes?
No, it would not be tax exempt for real estate taxes, but I will defer to the developers to um, share what this project means as far as those low-income tax housing credits.
Mayor, Council, I appreciate being here. Um, this is, man, how do you, my name's Michael Gillyard. Um, I work with Don Roseman, Turnberry Developers and I've been working with him for seventeen years. And I'm sitting back there trying to figure out what I'm gonna say, cause I'm super nervous, right? How, how do you watch two weeks of the Olympics and then come talk about senior housing without tearing up? I'm being totally serious.
Yeah.
And that's what we're doing here. Personally, I have family in-law that live in Warrensburg and I've been a part of an affordable project in Warrensburg. Two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, um, what a wonderful community. And you know, frankly, don't all of our uh, seniors deserve affordable housing? I think the answer is yes to that. Quality materials, it's uh, MHDC tax credits as um, mentioned, so thank you for that. Uh, that means that we are in it for the, for the long haul, we're in it um, as partners, you know, we don't walk away from these deals, we keep these deals, we invest into the communities. With that comes quality materials, uh, masonry, fiber cement products, things like that, I'm sure you guys are familiar with those products, you see them around your community. They have warranties that last, they're low maintenance, things like that. You know, we try to create sense of communities within our buildings, the common spaces, you know, we try to. This is getting into the weeds, but when we do a project like this, we will go back in like nine months and do what's called a latent defect inspection. And that's to walk through and to make sure that the quality and character of the building remains intact. And when we do that, we get an opportunity to talk to the tenants, that's really what we're here doing, is providing homes for folks, right? Like, that's what we're doing, so if we don't talk to them and really understand what we're providing, then maybe we're not providing the right product. So these tax credit projects provide us the opportunity to talk to those folks. You know, they like to play cards, there's a lot of activities for, it's funny that now they call them active adults, those active adults instead of senior, right? But you know, there are certain activities that as seniors, and I am getting there as well, like I'm getting close, um, there's activities that we like to do and we like to enjoy and we make sure that we incorporate those into our amenities. Um, rather than amenities that might, you know, somebody in their thirties or forties might be fond of. Um, that we submitted last year, we're submitting again this year. Um, we, we did get a little letter of recommendation from you guys last year and we appreciate that and you know, we're really just looking forward to providing homes in your community. And that's what we're here to do, and as far as rents and sort of how the tax credits work, uh, Sean could probably speak to that. Or if you have any questions you may shoot.
Nope, you're good.
We'll, we'll go to Sean now.
Thanks very much, everyone, thank you for, for letting us speak with you tonight and considering our proposal. Um, yeah, like Michael said, you know, we're, we're here for the long haul, if this can get approved. Uh, we did get some uh, very good feedback from the state allocating agency, MHDC, uh, from the application last year. Essentially, they said, you know, this, this was a very compelling application. Um, we just don't have enough funding available to, to get it awarded this year. But uh, you know, they, they gave us a very good recommendation to, that they would like to see us resubmit. Um, and we feel like we have a, a much better chance to get uh, this deal allocated uh, this, this next allocation round. Uh, the application will go in mid-September and we should find out before the end of the year if this will be able to move forward. Um, you know, just some, some basic general summary of the development. Like Danielle said, it's forty-four units, one and two bedroom. Uh, there'll be a mix of uh, units from, you know, there, there is uh, certain units will have income restrictions and they'll be, have um, their rents restricted to certain levels. Uh, but there'll also be several units that um, will be market rate units that will have no income restrictions or rent restrictions. So it'll be a mixed income community. Um, there'll be services provided by Catholic Charities of Kansas City, St. Joseph. Uh, they will be a lead referral agent and um, you know, they'll work with throughout the network with anyone that has uh, special needs or disabilities that is looking for, for uh, housing. Um, they will bring them to the property and see if it's a good fit. And they will also provide services as far as um, rent and utility assistance, uh, classes on financial budgeting, benefit coordination, exercise, nutrition, nutrition and fitness classes. So they'll, they'll provide um, you know, just a, a bunch of uh, services to keep everyone active. Uh, and make sure that everyone's getting everything that they need. Um, you know, just to give you a sense of uh, the demand in the area. All the comparable properties, um, they're about ninety-two to ninety-eight percent occupied. So essentially, that's, you know, these, these developments are having someone move out and someone's moving in immediately. So the demand is there, um, the location is, has great highway access, it's near Walmart, the senior center, Hy-Vee, libraries all within two miles. Um, you know, and from a standpoint of ongoing operations, um, th- these properties really are dependent upon uh, the management company that, that is keeping an eye on, on the properties. Uh, the management agent for this, for this development would be Ferry Management. They have over thirteen thousand units under management um, throughout two hundred and sixty-five apartment communities. And they have a portfolio occupancy of about ninety-seven percent. So they're professional, they keep everything occupied, looking good. Um, and, and as Michael said, these are long-term assets for us. Um, you know, we, we are, the, the, the time that you have to have these properties as uh, affordable and rent restricted, it's at least twenty years. And we hold these properties for the long haul, so that's why all those materials are used, the, the low-maintenance materials that provide longevity and will look good for foreseeable future. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have.
One question I have is the management company, will they have a?
Yes, yes, they'll have a, an office inside the property, full-time management.
Thank you.
Do you have any idea if the management company has gathered feedback from any of their tenants? As far as the tenant satisfaction with their management of their properties?
Uh, yes, yeah, and they, they do have a very good reputation um, for, for, for the properties they have under management. Um, and I think that um, you know, the, the occupancy kind of speaks for itself. Uh, you know, if they're able to keep these full, um, it means happy residents and uh, happy communities.
We definitely have a need for this Warrensburg, as you know, how many units have you all done in the past, roughly, do you?
Um, so just in general?
In.
I can't count that.
In Warrens, in Warrensburg.
No, yeah, just in general, not in Warrensburg, you don't have anything else Warrensburg?
Yeah, uh, well, we've, we've invested in um, maybe nine thousand units. Now Ferry Management manages the, most of our units. Um, but we're, we're active in nine, ten states. Uh, yeah, so we've got uh, plenty of experience, I think, I want to say we had, uh, we've invested in over two hundred communities in the state of Missouri.
But committed to long-term is very important and I, I'm very excited about this, this is quite near where I live actually, and it's exciting to me to see that that's gonna be developed finally. And although part of me always wanted to buy it and turn it into a park and city, but um, I don't have the money for that. But um, so I'm, I'm hopeful, very hopeful, because it is absolutely what our community needs and um, yeah, it's, it's exciting to see that something like this is going in so near me, it makes me happy.
I agree.
Resolution, move to the recommendation, resolution, pass the resolution, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, uh, mayoral appointments. Appoint Susie Latari as City Council Representative for the Energy and Sustainability Task Force. Appoint Jamie Debacker as a member Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term through July twenty twenty seven. And appoint Brian Jacobs, back to your old stomping grounds here, Brian, as alternate, alternate member for the Board of Adjustment for an unexpired term through June twenty twenty eight.
Motion to approve appointments.
Kushner?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Appearances, appearances to the council not listed on the agenda.
There's no one saying that.
Miscellaneous matters from the mayor and/or city council.
I would just remind everyone that the school, University of Central Missouri is about to be back in session, so turn left on McGuire while you can. Our international students are here this week, that's why I didn't have time to change, and so we uh, we got to welcome them for their health screening today, that's today, tomorrow and Wednesday, but our students will be back, starting to move in this Thursday, so just that way.
They're at nine o'clock in the morning, yeah.
Yeah.
Need to do any shopping?
Yeah.
If you want to go to a restaurant? Go now.
Go to Walmart now, and you won't fit in there again.
My daughter's at the airport today.
Oh, I wondered if she was back.
There'll be like ten thousand people there.
That's great, yeah.
When I was in Brawla.
For doing that.
We stopped and got something to eat and the first lady goes, why is there so many people here? And I said, well, we're moving in freshmen today, and she went, I gotta call in more help.
Yep.
Hey, um, item twelve, city staff updates, city staff report. Five-year capital improvement plan presented by Courtney Christensen, interim HR Finance Director. Anything else, Courtney, that's happened?
We wanted to, you know, we took public comment and there was no public comment, but at this point in time, if there's any feedback um, from the governing bodies, um, this would be your time to share that with us, or of course you can always catch us afterwards if you have a question.
I think we.
I just appreciate all the work that went into that and it's uh, refreshing to see a, you know, a budgeted plan that, you know, where outflow and inflow are matched, what a concept. So thank you for that and the, the fact that it's.
Five years out?
Right, that we're planning five years knowing that we're committing to one and we can adjust as things go, so.
Okay, I will say, I was supposed to say, I'm surprised Chris didn't yell at me, um, Parks is meeting this week um, and next week, and they will probably have some changes.
Okay, sure.
And so we will probably check, make some minor changes, but they will be providing the revenue for that too, so. Um, but you'll see some projects be added on, is what it is. There weren't any, I bet you were taking away, it was just adding, um, from what I saw, so we may be adding a couple more projects in.
Item twelve point two, city staff report third quarter analysis by Courtney.
Thank you, ma'am.
I will send through Jody the detailed sheets that most of you will not want to look at, they are pages and pages and pages. Um, but for those of you who are as into numbers as I am, I want to make sure you have it with my little comments on the side, all the way down. And uh, this was the first quarterly that our new management analyst, Jessica helped with. And um, so she incorporated all of the comments from all of the department heads into it, so um, the directors, so that was, it's been a fun process. So these are just some numbers, uh, this is just a synopsis of the quarterly analysis. Um, I will also send out all to the, to the directors, each of your individual ones, back too. Um, but the interesting thing is overall, um, all of the funds are looking pretty good. Um, the budget column is the amended column, cause you know, we did an amendment there um, a couple of months ago, and so we used those numbers. But um, so if we start with the general fund, you see that we had started out with an estimate of twelve million, nineteen thousand, one eighty as our bud, as our revenues. And the estimate is that it will be twelve thousand, four hundred and sixteen or eighteen, I'm getting my math wrong. Um, little tiny, uh, but uh, so an increase of about three hundred thousand, almost four hundred thousand dollars. Um, where that comes from, that's not like just made up, happy, I wish it was like this. Um, but when you look at the second quarter and then we had all of uh, July, so I actually went back in and looked at everything up to um, last Friday in revenues, and so these numbers are really there because you see what they were, it's the um, nine-month mark in June, and then you see what grew already in July, and then you see what's already come in in August and you go, yeah, these numbers are real. We are so close to the end of the year unless there's a major catastrophe. Um, and these are uh, conservative, I try not to push them out too far. On expenses, I did show you by department in case you were interested, but the interesting thing to me is that um, it shows that with the budget that there was a deficit budgeted, and in fact, before the amendment, the budget for um, the general fund was adopted with a three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollar deficit between revenues and expenditures, expecting that to come from probably fund balance. Um, but in the estimate, the, due to the increase in revenues and the savings, the department's um, savings, we're going to end the year, it looks like, with an extra um, three hundred and forty-two thousand versus um, having to borrow from the general fund. Now, there has been talk with the department heads, particularly because next year's budget, which we are not presenting at this time, but it's a leaner budget. Um, and because of that, uh, the department heads have, we have discussed with them doing a year-end encumbrance for some of the things that they, we had to cut from their budget, so I, I would not expect this to go back to the um, fund balance, but your fund balance is at almost seventy-five percent. So it's really healthy, um, but instead would look to probably do some year-ended encumbrances to, for um, expenses that they know about that uh, weren't able to fit into the budget for twenty twenty-five, so just so you know, but we'll deal with that at the end of the year. Uh, with the year-end encumbrance. The revolving grant reimbursement fund was a new fund for you all this year and we borrowed a hu, we, we uh, transferred a hundred, uh, five hundred thousand from the general um, fund, and it has already uh, in fact, we then immediately put those funds out to good use with the Johnson County Economic Development Corporation. They then came back and said, we need a small addition, not small, quarter of a million. They then came back and said, we need a small addition, not small, quarter of a million dollars, but, um, we'll pay it back within like thirty days. It was just kind of a gap. So we did that also, and the entire seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars has been returned already to the city. So we are as if we never even did it. At this point in time. So that's really good. Um, capital improvements, transportation, uh, it is actually showing um, a, a remainder from what was budgeted of, uh, one million seventy-six thousand. Um, that is actually mostly due to Cooper Boulevard. It was shown in the budget that, that Cooper Boulevard would be a million twenty out of there. But in fact, Cooper Boulevard had, had expenditures in other years that were unbudgeted and then only two hundred and sixty-three thousand in the current year. So it, it, it left a big hunk back in there. So that's kind of how that goes. And then some of the projects, you know, we want to be conservative and make sure they have enough money to build their projects and then they come in a little lower. So, so that's good news. Um, sales tax is coming in, sales and use tax is coming in well, and you can see by the numbers, the revenue then compared to the expenditures. Um, again, we had a few projects that are coming in a little lower, and so we are looking at instead of needing to borrow a hundred and ninety-six thousand from the fund balance, we are looking like we're going to end with about a hundred and ten thousand to add to the fund balance. Uh, parks is started out with a zero-based, uh, budget, revenues and expenditures exactly matched. Um, they have seen an increase in revenues. A lot of the new marketing has been paying off well. Some of the changes at the pool have paid off well. Um, sales and use tax are up for everybody. So that's been helping. Um, and so it looks like they will end the year with about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, um, to the good. And then water pollution control looks a little wonky, but that has to do with, um, something that I didn't have time to look into enough. And what it is, is you started out the year with, um, the idea that the fund balance was going to contribute six hundred and thirteen thousand. So that, that's already on the table. But then there was, um, an expenditure with HDR. They have a very large contract. That's a drawdown contract. And, um, but it wasn't budgeted. So it, it's just, that's why it looks like it does. We have a contract with HDR. They are doing their contract. They are being paid, but it wasn't budgeted. So, um, we will probably, if we, if it's not already encumbered, that's what I want to go back and look through the financial records and see if something was encumbered for the year. Um, but if it wasn't, then we'll just do at the, as we know, an end of the year amendment to the budget.
The contract with HDR.
Who's HDR?
So, uh, I cannot tell you what the HDR.
It's been forever since they.
Engineering firm.
Okay.
So, um, HDR is an engineering firm. Um, I can't tell you what those names are, uh, but that contract is for RSBR. So the expansion that we're doing.
So, so it's very necessary. It was, yeah, I wasn't.
There's money, there's revenue there, but the reason it wasn't, um, that's what it's for. And we're going to track it down and we're going to figure out what it is.
Yeah, yeah. I, I wasn't worried about it, but I just didn't have enough time to go figure out exactly. So I just showed it the way it appears in the documents because when I send you the documents, this is what they're going to show at this point in time. And then the convention and visitors bureau is doing really well. Their revenues are up. Um, I know I've reported that before. The lodging tax continues to bring in money and, um, they also lowered their expenditures by seventy-three thousand dollars. So they were already starting with a remainder. So, and it looks like they're going to have about a quarter of a million dollars to, uh, add to their fund balance.
Or to invest in something else. So anyway, so overall it's very healthy. I also did all of the other ones just because it was close to the end of the year. I didn't report out on
the neighborhood improvement district and the geo bonds and the debt service and the tip and all those, but they all, everybody's fine. Everybody's, it all looks good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will send you all the background information.
Thank you.
Item twelve point three. Warrensburg Convention and Visitors Bureau Fiscal Year Twenty-Five Budget and Strategic Plan Presented by Marcy Barnhart Tourism Director.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm going to slide in after Courtney's awesome presentation, especially that end. Um, just to highlight, um, two of the really critical pieces that the WCVB board approved at their board meeting last Thursday night, or last Thursday afternoon, the WCVB strategic plan, the WCVB board came together for an all-day retreat on June thirteenth. Had two consultants, Tracy Kemberlin and Kathleen Odell, and they led that retreat. We did, if you remember, back in April, May, we did several surveys and you all received one as council members. So did all the department head staff, all of our stakeholders, community stakeholders. Um, and so on the thirteenth, when the board came together, they reviewed the results of those surveys, reviewed the results of our twenty-one strategic plan, where did we end? Um, and, and where, where were we left on that one? Um, and we came up with three really strong goals. Goal one, comprehensive marketing plan. And there's a lot of objectives that are underneath that, uh, marketing plan that we're going to be completing to make sure that it is an, uh, a comprehensive plan. Visitor profile study. We did a profile study and I say that loosely. It was basically geo fencing. And it was paid for by the Missouri Division of Tourism. We used an agency, the state helped pay for that. It, it was geo fencing and it was great information. It told us how long individuals are here, where they're visiting, that kind of information, great information. But it's not a visitor profile study. A visitor profile study tells you why. Why are they coming? You can do all the great ads in the world and you can spend all the thousands of dollars, but if you don't know why they're coming, then you're missing your target. And we want to learn who are we missing and who do we have? That why makes a, is a really big factor that we need to take in consideration and future advertising and future efforts on our part. We will redesign our website. Our website is fantastic. We were able to incorporate a department header under the city of Warrensburg. We'd like to go and do a separate website that will allow us to do our brand, allow us to do some different things. Um, utilize the videos that we are using, have that, um, that branding throughout. We will be updating our visitor guide as well. We're going to work as long as the doors are open and the lights are on. This will always be an objective in our strategic plan. And as long as I'm part of the WCVB is strengthening our relationships with our community stakeholders. We have to do that as long as we're an organization, as long as we're working with UCM, Whitman Air Force Base, Main Street Council, Chamber, all the above, we need to have, uh, a great relationship with them and make sure any opportunities to be at the table, we are at that table. We also, in our survey, learned that we do a fantastic job of telling other stories. But do we tell our own? No. We don't tell the efforts of what the WCVB is doing. We don't tell from the mountaintop. I may have done it a few times with the visitor center, are they, uh, the welcome center, but, um, we don't tell about the, uh, grants that we award, the sponsorships we award, that money that's coming in from that lodging tax, we're giving it back out to the community. How much advertising do we spend for Main Street events? How many, how much advertising do we spend for Naukastor State Park, Halle Gardens, all of those? Um, how many grant, how much grants do we receive? And we're going to work to tell our story a little bit, incorporate that as well. Goal two is travel and tourism development, and that's support visitor transportation services. We know, uh, we are struggling with that and that's just been a constant since I've been with the WCVB. But we're going to work with those that are offering those private services, ask to be at the table when transportation services are discussed. Make sure, you know, our visitors have a voice, um, and, and be supportive of those that are providing that service. So is that, you know, including their information on our website, making sure our hotels have that information, making sure that that is a, an effort that we, uh, prioritize. And evaluate our community support program. Our community support program is our grant and sponsorship program. I'm very, very proud of the fact that since, uh, two thousand nineteen, we awarded every single dollar in that line item this year. It is a competitive program now, and we need to make sure that we are running it efficiently and effectively. We have a lot of great events that are happening in our community. That is funded by the lodging tax. So we have a lot of great applications. But when you put that application before and you say the number one line item, and on it said, how many hotel rooms will you be utilizing and you put zero? Well, it doesn't meet the criteria. And so we're going to be working to get that information out to make sure that our community organizations are educated on what is the purpose of this program and why are we doing that? And to support our travel and tourism. Operational finance, Courtney just mentioned, you know, finance is such a huge part of our organization. We are funded a hundred percent by the transient lodging tax. And when COVID happened, well, folks, they weren't, they weren't staying and they weren't paying. So we knew that we needed to be very physically responsible with the funds and, and not that that wasn't a priority before. I don't want to make it seem like it wasn't, but that really hit home. When you're, you know, you're analyzing whether or not you turn the lights on. Um, and, you know, we know that we need to look for all funding opportunities, grant opportunities. And I will tell you, if there's a grant opportunity and we meet that criteria, I'm jumping and I'm asking the board to allow me to, to apply. We're going to continue that and we're going to continue searching. We're going to support the city's collection of the transient tax from short-term rentals. That will start July two thousand twenty-five. Talking to the board on Thursday, we, they have approved to allow a member that are an owner of a short-term rental to serve on our marketing committee, have a voice. We want to hear from them. What can we do to help you and, and make sure that we're working together? Um, and we want them to, we want them to be at the table and we want to, we want to work together on that. We will be purchasing the Smith Travel Research Report. That research report is, is kind of like that visitor profile study. It's going to provide us that information. I can tell you that I creepily cruise the parking lots of the hotels at five-thirty in the morning because you can get a really good sense of the occupancy at that time of the morning. Because folks aren't stirring around, but that report will tell you because they, the hotels, if they're owned by chain, they have to report that information. Now, it doesn't give me specifically, I couldn't tell you this hotel or that hotel, but for the area, I can tell you what our occupancy is. So maybe I need, we need to focus a little bit more on our Sunday through Wednesday, or maybe it's more like Tuesday, Thursday. We're going to learn that. Right now it's just, well, I believe my perception and, and I don't believe that gets us very far. Um, and so we're also going to have a contingency plan for our revenue. We just talked about that with grants. Um, speaking of grants and all the, the money that comes to be, our budget was approved by the board. Our revenue is, uh, four hundred fifty-nine thousand. That includes sixty-eight thousand in grants. The transient tax of three hundred and eighty-five thousand. You remember from this last year, we had three hundred fifty, um, budgeted. We did increase that. Not only are we increasing that because of the short-term rentals, but we're also increasing it because we're seeing our, our hotels picking back up. And a small percentage in that. Um, we won't know what the impact of short-term rentals really truly is until we have a full budget year. It's, it's going to be start collecting in July twenty-five, but we know if, if those reservations are made in advance and there's going to be, we just saw that in two thousand nineteen, we went from two point five to five. There's some, you know, there's some, um, dating that we have to work around and, and get the ebb and flow on that because the dates, the way they hit. Uh, expenses, okay, so expenses is five hundred and thirty-nine thousand. And that includes two full-time staff, one part-time. The visitor profile study, the website redesign and an increase in advertising of twenty-five thousand dollars. That increase in advertising is due to, we received an increase in our grant. We went from thirty-seven thousand last year to almost seventy thousand dollars. Well, our grants are all fifty-fifty matching. And so if you get an increase in that grant, we got to have an increase in, in the part you're going to play. And so we did increase that and we're really excited about that. And you're, you're going back going, okay, her expenses are more than her revenue. That's exactly right. Well, we do have a strong fund balance and it's just, as Courtney stated that. And we knew that these were projects. We, we've been, I don't want to say kicking the can down the road, but we've been kicking it a little bit until we got into our home. And we're in our home now and these projects now need to come before and we need to get them accomplished to make sure that we have, um, effective efforts. And that, that includes the website redesign and the visitor profile study, increasing our advertising. So we will be utilizing eighty-one thousand from our strong fund reserve. That allows us even keeping even more, we're keeping more than six months reserve because of our grant program. It's, it's a reimbursement and sometimes then you, the reimbursement isn't received very timely. And so we need to make sure that we can still pay evergreen and keep the lights on. Um, and so we are keeping two hundred thousand in reserve. That's taken that eighty-one thousand in consideration that I just told you we'd be using for this upcoming budget year. That will estimating, it will provide us a hun- a hundred and sixty-nine thousand for potential investment. Um, I've hit those two big things that the, um, board approved and it will be the WCVB's, um, budget will be included in the city's budget and we appreciate that. We believe that that provides transparency, transparency for our community, um, and those, um, those reviewing us and learning more about our organization. We've been busy this summer, just a little bit, and I just take, take this opportunity really quick. I know you've all had a big night. Thank you to everybody that made the zip trip possible. That includes the public works crew that met me down there at five o'clock in the morning, to the two officers that were with us all day. Um, city manager Doolin, Mayor Euler, everybody that participated, that wouldn't have been possible without the community support. It's just another one of those projects that we couldn't have done without you all not blocking me or answering the call when I say, hey, can you help? Hey, can you, absolutely. What do you need? Where do you need us? Um, and that was an awesome project. We're still having positive feedback from those attractions that were, um, featured. And I will tell you, for the last two weeks, we've been keeping our visitor data at the visitor center. And, um, we've had several families from Kansas, from Leavenworth, Paola. I apologize, I can't remember all of Garnet, um, visit us because they saw us on the zip trip. So that was fantastic. And Retrograde said that weekend following, their door didn't shut. They had numerous people in there all saying that they had seen them on the zip trip and they were all new people coming in through the doors. Uh, that following week, we did Wings Over Whitman. We had a table at that event. They were a sponsor of, or we were, the WCVB was a sponsor over Wings Over Whitman. We're really proud about that. Uh, upcoming, I will be out on Thursday, working the Missouri State Fair. At the state fair, I'll be working the Missouri Travel Show at that fair, or at the fair, I will be providing rack cards for the Vietnam Wa- the traveling Vietnam wall and cost of freedom tribute that's coming to the bird Sunday morning. Um, they will be escorted in. Um, this is another one of those projects. We've got Warrensburg Police Department helping, um, Jason Gilbert, Jeremy Vanway, the police, or the fire department, the ambulance, the highway patrol, the sheriff, all helping us with this adventure. We're working with the Veterans Assistant League. It will be coming in on Sunday. They are having a program at two o'clock and I know Jody has, has provided you this information. At two o'clock is the formal, uh, program and then it will be open to the public from three to seven on Sunday. It will be open on Monday from nine to sev- or seven to seven. The WCVB is working with, um, the Veterans Home on a coffee with the veterans. So that will be from eight to nine on Monday more, Monday morning, and we're really excited about that. They're going to be hosting different readings about those veterans that are on the wall that are from our area at different times. Strongly encourage if you don't, please do follow the Missouri Veterans Home, uh, Warrensburg Facebook page. Letitia's, um, providing all this information on there. She's doing a great job of doing that. And then the wall will, um, it will hit the road on Tuesday at noon. So please come out. It is free. And, um, we're encouraging everyone to come out, participate, see the wall, uh, support the veterans, learn more about the veterans and from our area that are on the wall. That is a, the WCVB is a sponsor for the wall. And so we were able to, the, the actual expense of the wall to come was two thousand dollars and the WCVB did secure that sponsorship. Are there any questions? A lot of information. It wasn't like the Olympics. I didn't have like any grand ceremony.
Thank you.
Great job.
Great job, Mercy.
City staff updates. Community development.
Uh, I would just point out one item on there, just the right tab open. Um, we've been talking a couple of times throughout the year that this is one of the years where we will do another building code update, twenty twenty-four. We adopt those codes every six years. They come out every three years. We do not do them every three years. We are on a six-year rotation. Um, you have had a committee that met throughout March and April and May. We reviewed those, made up of, um, some city staff as well as local contractors and people in the field. Uh, in, in Warrensburg to do that work. And so, uh, they have worked through and made their recommendations for any local amendments and adoption by council. Uh, we will put those on file with the city clerk for ninety days. We are waiting on one more of them to be published in print form. It's available electronically, which is what the committee reviewed, but we don't have it in print form yet. So once we get it printed, then it'll go on file with, uh, the city clerk's office for ninety days. So I can't say yet when we will bring those forward for adoption, but we are going to start having our public information sessions. Uh, there will be two of those, one on August twenty-second, one on August twenty-ninth, both of them here in this room between two and four P M. So staff, Brett and Jeremy will make, uh, presentations, brief presentations about the code at the beginning, uh, at two o'clock and then they'll open it up. Brief presentations about the code at the beginning, uh, at two o'clock and then they'll open it up, question and answers. And so I don't know if it'll take the full two hours, depends on how many questions we get. But uh, the two sessions are the same, the presentations are the same at the beginning of each one. It's really only necessary to come to one, but you're welcome.
Barbara, they, will that include the local exceptions?
Yes.
Okay. Questions, comments? City staff updates, fire department, July activity report?
Um, yeah, we have a hundred and twenty five overlapping calls. Yeah. Year to date. Uh, we've, it's been a busy July for us. Um, we've also increased twenty percent. In calls from this date last year. Uh, also, we have three outside trainings. Uh, one with rope technician, if you want to learn how to tie ropes knots and anchor systems. Which we put to use not long ago over in Higginsville to help them.
Oh.
Retrieve their guy from the tower. Uh, and then uh, yeah, it's been, it's been quite busy. That week, that day, we had that mutual aid risk. And then we also had a house fire that day, that evening, which our guys put out with a can, uh, of water, pressure can, they took up with. So uh. It's been, it's been a busy.
You also had an apartment building. You had an apartment building that caught on fire.
We did, that, that's in this moment. But yes, yeah, yeah, no, no problem. Uh, that was, uh, we called for mutual aid. Uh, we received mutual aid from Concordia on that fire. Uh, it was, uh, had a couple of guys hurt, some heat. Uh, some stuff fell on their heads. Uh, during the firefight, we got there is pretty much, or climbed up the back wall and into the roof. When I got there, it was, looked like a. Jiffy pop popcorn with a flame shooting about twenty, twenty five feet out of a middle roof. And our guys were in defensive mode, which going from offense to defense is a long and tedious process. Uh, to go from, oh, we were inside at the beginning, uh, they ran into three different apartments. It was a four, four apartment system. They had a lot of dragon hose up and down three different sets of stairs. Uh, to get to where they thought the fire was in the ceiling and then it just went ahead and burned through the roof. And then we knew exactly where it was.
Doyle, just out of curiosity, was that apartment complex, apartment complex sprinkled?
No, it was not sprinkled. There was no sprinkle. Uh, sprinkled, there was not much for fire uh. Protection systems in it. Tipperveil and one like that, we would ask that they sheetrock, put a one hour separation. Somewhere in that wall roof system and that wasn't there. So um, I do know the owners have already, they're already starting to rebuild. So uh, I don't believe that that was an insured building.
Wow.
Uh, so it was, it's self insured. Uh, so, yeah, and I don't believe that one of the three renters that were there had insurance. So it was, it was pretty much, uh, a pretty devastating fire for, for the occupants in that area.
It looked like it really spread.
What's that?
It looked like it really spread.
It did. It, it got up in the attic and once it took off, it just took all the way across all four apartments. Uh, the, the uh, furthest north end of the departures probably took the most damage. And uh, that was a mother and her son that went there.
Any idea what started it?
We're, we can't rule out, we ruled out pretty much everything but smoking materials on the back. And if, if you have any vinyl siding is great, you don't have to paint it, but but it does it burn. And once it gets up and underneath that siding, in a vinyl siding, it just melts and just takes right on up to the sockets and into the attic.
Hey Doyle, would you mind explaining a little bit of. For the people who smoke and have apartments and all the uh. The um. Volatility of uh, potting soil and using that as an ash can?
No. Sand is a good, is a good option. Uh, just an empty coffee can with water is a good option. Uh, but uh, potting soil has a tendency, it's made up of a lot of fertile uh. Ground up tree stuff and potting soil and it does. And uh, if you're throwing, you're discarding your smoking material into that, then. Especially as dry as it was, if anybody remembers that night, it was very hot. Uh, we remember it well. There's lots of sweat going on. Uh, that was, what was, what was really. Turning into our problem is our guys were just getting really hot, uh, overheated and then we knew we had an extended, what we call an extended overhaul time. Where we knew we'd be tearing out ceilings and uh, the roof trying to get it all extinguished. So then we asked, requested mutual aid. Uh, one of our departments that we always go to, they, they had a hard time getting. But fulfilling that request was due to man and order. And so we reached out to mafia county and we see. Forty, came in, the five people helped us with the overhaul.
I'm glad no one was hurt.
Yeah, but your personnel, how much we appreciate their, good work there. Thank you. Danielle?
Yeah, I just had a couple of things to kind of building off, um, fire, Chief Jennings gave me a memo uh, before he went off to training. But if you all recall, back in December of twenty twenty three, city council um, passed a resolution that authorized us to apply for several grants. Um, through the state, um, using the ARPA money that they got. Um, we uh. Had several applications that were submitted by the fire department. Um, the ones that were denying, were denied, were the battalion chief apparatus. Installation of the new station alarm, uh, and notification system and replacement of existing vehicle exhaust system. So you saw that those three items are still in your capital improvement plan. However, um, they did award us approximately ninety seven thousand dollars. Um, for additional portable radios. Um, so we will be able, it's a fifty fifty match. Um, but we will be able to use the money that we spent on portable radios um. As a couple of years ago, as our match.
Great.
So uh, we are very excited about that and Chief Jennings will uh, be working that program. The last news that I have to share, I am very excited to welcome Kristen Dormand. Uh, Kristen Dormand. Is our new assistant city manager slash administrative services director. So she will be over finance, human resources. Um, I T municipal court and then we are kind of talking through uh, the possibility of having her oversee some other departments as well. Um, so we are uh, very excited to welcome Kristen and I've asked her to kind of do her three minute elevator speech, just to introduce herself to you all. Uh, and the community as well. So Kristen, welcome.
Thank you. Thanks Danielle. Um, good evening, Mayor, Council. Very excited to be here. I won't take three minutes to talk about myself, but um, just to share my background and experience that led me to here. Um, I have a master's in public administration from Arizona State, so I was born and raised in Arizona and moved to Missouri about eight years ago. Um, I worked for the city of Independence as their budget manager for a few years. Um, I also worked for the city of Pleasant Hill as their assistant city administrator. And then most recently, I worked for a nonprofit called the Alliance for Innovation. That works with cities to help them prepare for the future that's to come for local government and help them. Um, implement some innovative practices um, in their local governments. So. That's kind of a little bit about me and what led me here. Um, and I'm really excited to work with all of you to serve the community. And excited to work with the staff as well. So thanks for having me.
We're very glad to have you.
Very glad to have you.
Quite a first day, so.
To welcome you back to city hall. That's all we have this evening for you.
That's all, folks. That's it. All right, we adjourn then.
Thank you.